Good evening, community. Welcome to our regular board meeting, October 8th, 2024. We're going to call to order. I'd like to begin with our flag salute. We have BBMS student, Lior Pora Vahim, Noah Paul, and Geffen Pinchazzy. All rise.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. And mission and vision?
BHUSD mission statement, vision statement, and values. Mission: Educational excellence, vision. Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Community pledge?
Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to: Model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part and protect in an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our school and personal property. By holding ourselves and encourage others accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I wanted to acknowledge two different things. One is, of course, October 7th yesterday, we continue to keep in our hearts those victims whose lives were lost, as well as the people who were affected. I also would like to think about many of the victims of the flooding in the southeast and all of the terrible hardship that they are going through. We are thinking of them. May I get an approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to move item 14B to follow the consent calendar.
Okay, all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Breggy, report of closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There was no action in closed session.
Okay, that brings us to the teacher-student spotlight. We are honoring the BHUSD Teacher of the Year representative for LA COE, Jesse Braun, at Beverly Vista Middle School. And we have students Lior Pora Vahim, Noah Paul, and Geffen Pinchazzy to honor him.
All right. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Dr. Breggy, thank you for having us come and celebrate one of our amazing educators. For those of you who don't know, I'm Rich Waters, Principal, Beverly Vista Middle School, one of the third tallest people in the district. With over eighty school districts in LA County and over three hundred thousand teachers, Jesse Braun was selected as one of sixty-nine district Teachers of the Year. From that group, sixteen educators were selected as LA County Teachers of the Year, and Jesse Braun was one of those sixteen. Later this year, he will travel to Sacramento to vie for five spots for the prestigious California Teacher of the Year. One of those five will go on to the National Teacher of the Year as a candidate. We wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge this incredible accomplishment. Under Jesse Braun's guidance as yearbook teacher, students create beautiful projects that seamlessly come together in our yearbook. As a result of his dedication, we have seen a significant increase in course requests for this class and purchases for the finished product. As a librarian, Jesse teaches classes to students of all grade levels on how to effectively check their sources for reports, manage school technology resources, and communicate appropriately through email. He has successfully enhanced our asset management system, making it easy to check out books and other resources daily. However, those who know Jesse well understand that his exceptional communication skills and his strong work ethic are the real reasons behind the system's success. Jesse always appears composed and focused because he is consistently dedicated to his work. Due to Jesse's efforts, our library has become an essential part of our campus, our hub, if you will. It is a welcoming, fun, and safe environment for students who do not feel comfortable other places on campus. The students view Jesse as a trusted ally who is always willing to help them. Jesse created digital citizenship and artificial intelligence lessons and taught them to students during their history and English classes. These lessons addressed AI as a category of research tools, as well as enlightening our students about some of the related digital citizenship issues involved with using that technology. His lessons also encourage students to use that technology appropriately. Jesse even created an emergency lesson as a refresher and taught that lesson to all history classes immediately after an AI incident that occurred last year. He did those things in order to respond to the students' specific questions about the educational code and the law. The students are not the only people on campus who feel a certain way about Jesse. The teachers, office staff, and administrators all have been positively affected by his friendly, reliable, and helpful manner. All one need do is ask, and Jesse will assist them to the best of his ability. We have some special visitors tonight who would like to say a few words on behalf of this amazing educator.
Mr. Braun assigned me to photograph the dance team and the football team. Through this experience, I got to learn how the football team practices are run and how they prepare for a game. I also got a behind-the-scenes look on how the dance team prepares for their performances.
Mr. Braun taught me the importance of a hook when writing a story so that I can capture the interest of the reader. He instilled in me the importance of a yearbook as a way to capture memories for all students. I get to look at this yearbook for many years to come and know that I was part of making it happen. Thank you, Mr. Braun, for your guidance and inspiration.
Mr. Braun has encouraged me to be more open-minded when writing stories. He motivated me to enjoy being a part of a creative practice when writing a yearbook. He has also taught me how to be a better writer and be more confident when doing work for school.
Thank you. Please come on up, Mr. Braun.
And we'd love to get a picture with the board members as well. Many people know Mr. Braun, and I want the board to have an opportunity to share also, but it's just, you're such a unicorn to have because of your being a teacher, being a librarian. Like, this is very few of you are left in the world. And your ability to jump in, pull a staff together, instructionally design and help pull the staff together is remarkable. And what you've done in such a short amount of time is to be recognized, and that is one of the many reasons why to be selected as Teacher of the Year in our county, in such a large county, is a huge honor, not only for you personally and professionally, but for our school district. And we're going to milk that to our advantage all year long. So, thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
And then to you.
Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you. Thank you. And then to you.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. And mission and vision?
BHUSD mission statement, vision statement, and values. Mission: Educational Excellence Vision. Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Community pledge?
Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part and protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our school and personal property. By holding ourselves and encourage others accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, I wanted to acknowledge two different things. One is, of course, October seventh yesterday, we continue to keep in our hearts the, those victims whose lives were lost, as well as the people who were affected. I also would like to think about many of the victims of the flooding in the southeast and all of the terrible hardship that they are going through. We are thinking of them. May I get an approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to move item fourteen B to follow the consent calendar.
Okay, all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Breggy, report of closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There was no action in closed session.
That brings us to the teacher-student spotlight. We are honoring the BHUSD Teacher of the Year Representative for LA COE Jesse Braun at Beverly Vista Middle School. And we have students Lior Pura Bahim, Noah Paul, and Geffen Pinchazzy to honor him.
All right. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Dr. Breggy, thank you for having us come and celebrate one of our amazing educators. For those of you who don't know, I'm Rich Waters, Principal Beverly Vista Middle School, one of the third tallest people in the district. With over eighty school districts in LA County and over three hundred thousand teachers, Jesse Braun was selected as one of sixty-nine District Teachers of the Year. From that group, sixteen educators were selected as LA County Teachers of the Year, and Jesse Braun was one of those sixteen. Later this year, he will travel to Sacramento to vie for five spots for the prestigious California Teacher of the Year. One of those five will go on to the National Teacher of the Year as a candidate. We wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge this incredible accomplishment. Under Jesse Braun's guidance as yearbook teacher, students create beautiful projects that seamlessly come together in our yearbook. As a result of his dedication, we have seen a significant increase in course requests for this class and purchases for the finished product. As a librarian, Jesse teaches classes to students of all grade levels on how to effectively check their sources for reports, manage school technology resources, and communicate appropriately through email. He has successfully enhanced our asset management system, making it easy to check out books and other resources daily. However, those who know Jesse well understand that his exceptional communication skills and his strong work ethic are the real reasons behind the system's success. Jesse always appears composed and focused because he is consistently dedicated to his work. Due to Jesse's efforts, our library has become an essential part of our campus, our hub, if you will. It is a welcoming, fun, and safe environment for students who do not feel comfortable other places on campus. The students view Jesse as a trusted ally who is always willing to help them. Jesse created digital citizenship and artificial intelligence lessons and taught them to students during their history and English classes. These lessons addressed AI as a category of research tools, as well as enlightening our students about some of the related digital citizenship issues involved with using that technology. His lessons also encouraged students to use that technology appropriately. Jesse even created an emergency lesson as a refresher and taught that lesson to all history classes immediately after an AI incident that occurred last year. He did those things in order to respond to the students' specific questions about the educational code and the law. The students are not the only people on campus who feel a certain way about Jesse. The teachers, office staff, and administrators all have been positively affected by his friendly, reliable, and helpful manner. All one need do is ask, and Jesse will assist them to the best of his ability. We have some special visitors tonight who would like to say a few words on behalf of this amazing educator.
Mr. Braun assigned me to photograph the dance team and the football team. Through this experience, I got to learn how the football team practices are run and how they prepare for a game. I also got a behind-the-scenes look on how the dance team prepares for their performances.
Mr. Braun taught me the importance of a hook when writing a story so that I can capture the interest of the reader. He instilled in me the importance of a yearbook as a way to capture memories for all students. I get to look at this yearbook for many years to come and know that I was part of making it happen. Thank you, Mr. Braun, for your guidance and inspiration.
Mr. Braun has encouraged me to be more open-minded when writing stories. He motivated me to enjoy being a part of a creative practice when writing a yearbook. He has also taught me how to be a better writer and be more confident when doing work for school.
Thank you.
Please come on up, Mr. Braun.
And we'd love to get a picture with the board members as well. Many people know Mr. Braun, and I want the board to have an opportunity to share also. But it's just, you're such a unicorn to have because of your being a teacher, being a librarian. Like, this is, very few of you are left in the world. And your ability to jump in, pull a staff together, instructionally design and help pull the staff together is remarkable. And what you've done in such a short amount of time is to be recognized. And that is one of the many reasons why to be selected as Teacher of the Year in our county, in such a large county, is a huge honor, not only for you personally and professionally, but for our school district. And we're gonna milk that to our advantage all year long. So, thank you for everything that you've done for us.
We're gonna have a quick picture, and then we're gonna go around and make some comments to Mr. Braun.
I also wanna, before the board has a moment to comment, I just wanna thank Dr. Seaman for the nomination process. As we are taking more of our responsibility to get recognized for many of our programs, it's just, it is a very, it's burdensome at times to go through a process like this to nominate and then ultimately get somebody who is interviewed and then selected. So, I do wanna give a shout out. There's so many great things happening in our school district, and it takes one another to help recognize and to nominate. And so, I just wanna take that moment to say thank you to you, Ms. Dr. Seaman.
Okay, board members, if you'd like to share some comments?
Yes. First of all, Mr. Waters, I'm the nine-hundred-and-fifty-second tallest person in the district, and that doesn't include K through five, okay? Mr. Braun, I, they're gonna change the term "Jack of All Trades" to "Jesse of All Trades." Because every, I've, I've been here, you know, we know quite a while, don't need to go through that. But almost every year, you're somewhere else. And it's for the reasons of that you're needed and you fulfill the position brilliantly, whatever it is. So, our loss is always that when we take you from one place to another, somebody's gonna not have you, right? But then now, the kids at BV have you there in this position, and the impact is clear. And I thank you. And it also really selfishly helps the district fulfill their strategic plan goal in more recognition. So, thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Braun. I'm not at BV that often, but when I am, I'm usually jetting through your library from one side to the other. And you're always welcoming me, always welcoming the students, always busy making sure you're helping. And I just wanna congratulate you. Thank you for making us proud.
I had the pleasure of joining you at the award luncheon. And I had the opportunity to talk to you. And one thing I said, as someone who works in the schools, I said, you know, the role of the library and librarian has changed so much. And when I go into a lot of schools in Los Angeles or a number of schools, sadly, I go in and I see one person at a desk in a big, empty room, which tells me that, you know, the room was designed a long time ago when things were very different, when books, you know, were really the majority of the place, and now things are becoming more digital. But I had a very interesting conversation with you. And basically, you represent everything that is great about a great teacher. And that is, you are evolving with the times. You told me on no uncertain terms that there was plenty to do as a librarian in a digital world. And also, just hearing what the students had to share about some of the great things you've done, it really does sound like you are a Jack of All Trades, but you are adaptive to twenty-first century learning. One young lady said that you provided her with a hook to make the best storyline. But I was also happy to learn tonight that during the AI challenges, you decided to take it upon yourself, right, to do a refresher course in how we behave online. So, a teacher who is adaptive and reactive in that manner absolutely is, for sure, is gonna be one of our best. So, we're very grateful to you. Thank you. All right. See you again. Thank you. We're gonna now move to public comment. We do have one person on Zoom. And then we will go with our in-house visitors for public comment. Oh, hello, Christopher Kump.
Yeah.
Welcome. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, members of the community, and all in attendance. I'm here on behalf of the California School Employees Association. I'm the Labor Relations Representative for the CSEA unit at Beverly Hills Unified School District. And I'm here because we're looking for a better relationship with the district when it comes to contracting out the work of our security officers. I wanna preface with this. We understand that the wants and the needs of this community necessitate private security contractors at the perimeter of the schools here. CSEA's goal here is not at all to disparage NASTEC or any other agency the district contracts with to do that work. And if it were just that work, I doubt that we'd be present. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where the school safety administrator is effectively sidelining our members whose entire role is school safety in favor of security contractors. We found that not only is that practice reducing opportunities that our officers have to refine their skills in securing the school sites, but it's now actually causing armed security contractors to come in contact with students on campus during shifts that our members could, should, and normally would have covered. So, we brought that issue up to school safety administration for quite some time. And for a time, those issues get fixed, but then everything seems to go off the rails again. And so, if you're in the community or watching otherwise, you may want to know why that's important. Our security officers, for those who don't know, are permanent employees who know the school sites like the back of their hands. And more importantly, they understand how students behave and who is and who is not supposed to be on campus with the students. No one here is disputing that it can be a good idea to have armed guards around to respond to an emergency. However, we've seen time and time again that it's often faculty that are able to prevent emergencies for the students and on behalf of the students before they happen because they're familiar with the campuses and the students. So, what we're here asking is that the board direct their school safety administration to work with us to make sure that contracting out of security services happens in a way that is intentional and fully compliant with the steps that need to happen to legally contract out work. We welcome the opportunity to talk with the administration, as long as they're willing to talk with us. And that is the change that we are hoping to seek out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to actually give some information, which is that for each topic on public comment, we generally try to keep it to twenty minutes per topic. However, we're not gonna do that to you, folks. We just ask that if you could try to commit to your time, that would be great. With that said, Jose Salis is giving his time to Andre Guerrero. So, Andre, you have six minutes.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Dr. Breggy. Members of the board, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here and allowing me to speak to the public. On behalf of the securities, security officers of Beverly Hills Unified School District, represented by the California Schools Employees Association and its Beverly Hills Chapter Three Twenty-Eight. As I indicate by the signatures below, we like to enter a formal complaint against our Executive Director of Security Safety, Mark Mead. Mark Mead is both unprofessional and vindictive, often initiating workplace harassment, workplace bullying, creating a hostile work environment and with his aggressive demeanor against our staff. His behavior has not only been witnessed by our unit, but teachers and administration alike. Mark Mead doesn't display the qualities of a leader or commitment to our department as a director. We feel his focus is to diminish and degrade our security department to focus on empowering contract, security contractors by outsourcing our work to NASTEC and publicly acknowledging them instead of his district security team, who deal with students on a day-to-day basis, developing a great rapport. I'm sorry, developing a great rapport and that supports the students to safeguard the campus internally. Many of our department, in our department, have had unprofessional encounters with Mark Mead. We have learned not to expect that he reflect or changes behavior after staff addresses it. As a non-management classified employees, if any of us spoke to any of our managers by yelling, shouting, or displaying any kind of aggressive behavior, we would be immediately disciplined, and it would rightfully be documented. We understand that his position comes with great responsibility. But we believe that those responsibilities does not includes abusing the power granted to him. We hope that the board takes our concern seriously and take swift and decisive action to address the behavior of our director. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Dion Brown, and you have six minutes.
Hi, my name is Dion Brown. I've been with the Beverly Hills Unified District for seven years. So, I've known how some of the things work over here when it comes to security. This is just some of the things that we see that's going on that needs to be brought to your attention. We're gonna say the overtime has been given to us, like, the last minute, Thursday or Friday. You get it by three-thirty, which, you know, most of have families, and we have other things going on. And it's not fair to us that we get it the last minute, and if we can't work it, it's not fair to us at all. We have no guards working at Horseman at six-thirty. We have the contract company working there after I leave at Horseman at six-thirty, which is not fair. It's contracting out our work. Using NASTEC to work all the special assignments. We usually work fire drills. We work the graduation when you guys have the night watch, when you have the equipment outside. We were not allowed to work that. They put NASTEC on it. And then there's other things that's been going on, but we don't know all the, we hear from other people, some of the programs that use NASTEC. I'm sorry for stuttering. NASTEC has been working more hours than us on JPA. We'll work maybe six to eight hours, but NASTEC is there from seven to seven on the most days. They've been opening and closing the schools on the weekends. Knowing, they know, NASTEC knows what's going on at the schools more than us. We are the last to know, or we don't even know what's going on. They sometime inform us, which we find that wrong. We should be informed first. We are the security guards for the school. We do have a problem with them working in the command center, and none of us is, is us working there. That is, I don't understand why you guys will have them inside because they're supposed to be outside working, not inside. NASTEC opening and closing schools. NASTEC working Harthorne. They're at Harthorne, and why are we not? They've been working there every weekend. We have not been there at all, this half, since this year, summer last year. We have NASTEC walking around with firearms. And they're not supposed to be inside the school at all with firearms. They guys, so this is another thing that we have. You guys, not saying you guys personally, but they're hiring most of the, I'm sorry. They're hiring most of new security to work weekends instead of during the week when we need people for our staff, for our school, its facilities. You know, we need our security to make sure the students are safe. Why is it that you guys are concentrating on the weekends? We have a shortage. When we don't have enough bodies to cover a lot of the schools, when somebody calls off, we don't have substitutes. We don't have nobody to come cover us. We've brought this concern to HR, to management, and we've been ignored. We've been trying to get this stuff fixed, but we've just been ignored. And I'll pass my time on to RJ.
Hello, everyone. My name is RJ. I've been working for the Unified School, Beverly Hills Unified School District for over twenty years. In the past several years, I feel this department has been targeted and mistreated. I would greatly appreciate if the board looked into these matters for themselves and not rely on hearing from a third sort, a third party. We look forward in having real conversations. We look forward to having real conversations concerning these major issues with the board in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We have our final speaker, Romeo Carey, regarding CTE Advisory Committee Meeting. Romeo. Good evening. You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, three is my favorite number. Madam President, Dr. Stern, ex-KBEV'er Noah Margo, distinguished board member, and good to have an attorney in, I mean, in board member manitary. And my favorite of all, Dr. Breggy. Oh, so, the issue here is really a small one. KBEV, the equivalent to this school district's press really enjoys and has, for as long as I've known, the privilege of doing its job. And that job is to cover all areas of board, could be established by the board, could be the district, could be administration. Those are all Brown Act ordained entities that would be involved in that. Last, two weeks ago, on September twenty-sixth, a student went and recorded the PTA and was questioned, "What are you doing? Recording the PTA meeting?" Because we can. And then they mentioned that there was a CTE meeting, which was on the agenda, or the calendar, I should say. So, the student, I'm not even interested in recording it myself. This is all student, this is student journalism. They said, "I wanna record it." I said, "Go right ahead." Went to record it. They told him, "Get out of here. You can't record it." And then he left in a hurry, left it in the bag, and the bag was scooped up. The camera was still rolling. The camera disappeared. No one looked or had a conversation with me. I never even, I didn't hear anything from anybody except the camera was missing. I said, "Bring the camera back. We're using it for the football game." Camera returned with no cards in it. So, I said, "Where's the cards?" They came back later, erased. I'm like, "What?" Well, look, I don't mind if you erased it, but I think there should have been an arbitrator. There's a legal, you've crossed the line. You don't erase something that we recorded in a public arena. If you think it was private, I've never seen a CTE advisory committee that wasn't public. Go to YouTube. There's thousands of them. To make a, and then they sent an email saying that this was, you know, penal code six-three-two. If you read the first line, it makes sense on your side, but if you read the rest of it, you're dead in the water. And so, I just wanted to say that KBEV and student journalism shouldn't be, the student was interrogated the next day. Had an emergency meeting with the principal. What'd you do that? Basically, we have evidence that you did something, you know, and it's just wrong. To be interrogated, journalism is not a crime. The pillar of a fair and open society is KBEV. And the idea that what just transpired, it screams as loud as you possibly can, that why is it being taken from the public? That's it, that's it. And it's not allowed. I'm not gonna allow it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Okay, consent calendar.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items ten E and ten G.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, ten E.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion for the approval of the rental agreement with the Wallace-Annenberg Center for the high school dance concert.
All second? Discussion?
Yes, thank you. I just had a question about this, Dr. Breggy. I don't take an issue with it because I know that the company dance program is such a phenomenon, and it is big. I just was curious to know about the source of funds because we were advised that there's a grant for- Um, I just was curious to know about the source of funds because we were advised that there's a grant for it. And I was curious to know, what is the grant and next year when, um, B three and B four are open and we have a performing arts wing, uh, will we get the grant again and can it be used for other things?
Yeah, so I can answer that from the perspective of, um, that we, we have these additional funds that are in this grant. And if it, if it does continue, um, and we believe that it will, that we will use it appropriately at that time. Um, for, in, in really, there's very, it's very limited what you can use it for. You have to be really, you, sometimes it's, it's difficult to even spend it. This worked out perfectly because it, not only for the dance company, but also for our final musical. Is that we're this close to opening up B three, B four, that it would be extremely limiting. And so we looked at this as, is this a good use of funds? Is this the best use of funds? And we believe that it is for the continuity of the program and for the expectations of the program and a program that we're trying to grow. That, that we have the ability to showcase the type of talent, the type of work that can be done and to utilize a bigger stage. And it just, it just happened to be so close to our construction, um, that you'll see this again for the, the musical. That, um, we can involve more kids this way and it's, it's actually a, um, beneficial to more of the students that are involved if we could use funds in this way.
This is our first time at Wallace, right?
No, we've been there, we've been there before and, and Dana Finley does a great job of, uh, negotiating. She uses her administrator skills to, um, negotiate that contract. Um, and it's, it's done really well there. And what I love about being there is that it is right in the heart of our community as well.
Location, parking.
Right, but it's, we, we don't, uh, the grant money that we receive is, cause we often aren't awarded grants. And so, and, and through this, these prop funds, this is the best use of these funds at this time for this reason. And it's short-lived, as you know, because we're going to open that up in a few months. Um, but you know, our students for the last eight, nine, ten years have, uh, this construction has been on their backs. And to, to, to not be able to follow through this year, when we're this close, we believe it is the best use of funds.
Thank you, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion was made. All second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move to ten G.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Ari Jones for high school student Chromebooks and additional laptops for repairs.
All second.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I pulled this one, this is about the, oh, maybe it's, hi. Just wanted to understand to, um, why some of the laptops are so much more expensive, like almost double than the other. Um, and is it required? Um, and then also I want to make sure going forward in our tech fund, since the bond, um, is going to be gone within the next year or two, that if this is going to be an ongoing need for testing, that we make sure to incorporate these kind of dollars so that we can set the money away. And sorry, I didn't know you're injured. I'm s- I hope you're okay.
It's fine, it's a walking injury.
What happened?
I was walking. It's embarrassing.
It happens.
Nothing special, just walking. Um, so there's two sets of computers on there. So right now, um, part of the middle school and the high school are utilizing Dell laptops. Um, we know that they are expensive to use and so we're gonna be starting to roll out into Chromebooks. So you'll see there's two different purchases on there. Um, right now, when student laptops go in for repairs, because a majority of them are using and utilizing Dell laptops, that's what we are gonna have that fifteen percent overage. Moving forward, knowing that we do have restricted funds left, we are gonna be moving to Chromebooks. So we are aware of that and that's why we're gonna start moving to that process. This past year at Beverly Vista, we have already started to phase in Chromebooks into sixth grade. And this year, we've been talking about doing that same thing for high school. Um, for APSAT and PSAT testing, the Chromebooks are more secure to use than the Dell laptops. So that's a requirement and it's just easier for us and our techs to run when we're doing testing. Um, so that's what the Chromebooks are gonna be used for this year. And then as we start phasing those in, we'll see less of those expensive computers. Because right now, they're not fully being utilized the way that they should be and we see the need to actually utilize the Chromebooks more.
And then do, do you find that the Chromebooks have the same quality as the Dell in, from the student perspective?
Quality is different, but most, everything that the students use is all web-based and that's where the Chromebooks just make more sense.
Good enough.
For classes that utilize different softwares, like our fashion programs, our different photography programs. They have lab computers and access to that. We're aware of that moving forward. So that is gonna be part of our, we work with Dr. Seaman and the CTE funds to make sure that they still have access to computers that run those higher power programs in the background, but for day-to-day use. Right now, especially in middle school, we noticed that the Chromebooks just seem to be a little bit more fiscally responsible at this moment. Because like you said, moving forward, we know that those computers are a little bit more expensive and they're not being utilized to their full potential.
Yeah, I keep screaming it from the mountain tops. The ATM is closing.
Yes.
So, um,
And they're easier to monitor, cause we use different programs and products and right now, like with GoGuardians, so teachers have access to it. We find that because Dells are a little bit more customizable, they're a little bit harder to track, whereas Chromebooks are a little bit easier to track and utilize with our different programs that we're using. So we're taking everything into consideration and we're working with, um, the ed tech programs as well to make sure that we're gonna integrate them seamlessly.
Thank you.
What about durability? Because I know that a lot of the issue, well, they, computers have gotten more, um, what's the word? Um, portable and easier and not breaking as much, but kids can be pretty rough with their things. So, I mean, how do they compare in terms of the ability to withstand, you know, some of the things that kids and teenagers do?
Cheaper to fix, which is nice.
Okay.
Um, Chromebooks do have various levels of ruggedly to them. Um, typically right now, because they're kind of going back and forth, we've taken that to consideration. Uh, we work closely with Ari Jones and they tell us when different products come out, so we can see that part of them and see if they're a little bit more durable, depending on age level. Um, so Chromebooks actually are a little bit more foolproof in that than the Dell computers.
Okay, good.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yes, so that brings us to fourteen B. Uh, discussion and direction regarding naming and pledge agreement approved by the board on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three on donated plaques commemorating general, national, or international events.
Great, so, um, I can, uh, begin, uh, just kind of frame this. Um, uh, and Mr. Eggerman is here from BHGF as well. This is, is really to, to put, um, uh, to put some framework around in the, the naming rights that we have. And so, um, and BHGF and the district work really well together when, uh, it comes to revising, um, and, and looking at these types of opportunities for our community members. And the board has done a lot of work over the last, uh, year, uh, specifically about, uh, getting contracts in line. So we know where naming rights are coming from and, and, and coming up with a consistent process and, and, and form. And just the overall contract piece has been really consistent. Um, we are in a situation where, that when we look at the actual policy, which is seventy-three-ten, the naming of facility is that there, there is a, um, when, when a naming right occurs for the school district, that there is, um, a plaque that, uh, is, commemorates either a loss. Uh, it has the person's name on it that's either donating, or if there was a, a loss of a person. Um, is, that happens through this process and we evaluate that, we take that information in and, um, and then process this information. The, the question for the board is that i- if there's a situation where we have a, an, a naming right that fits all of the board's, um, regulations and the expectations, is that if there is going to be a situation where, um, there is going to be something on a plaque that is more than just the loss of an individual, but more of a cause, um, that, what type of board involvement would there be, um, in any policy changes going forward? Um, the question really comes down to that, I mean, there's a, there's a reason why it's pretty general in the policy. Because, uh, I meet with BHGF and then we kind of talk about where the naming right is going. Does it fit what the expectation is? The board approved financial part of that? And then we look to see the, the ceremony part. Do we put out a press release? Do we put out, you know, all of the things that happen in between? And so that's why the policy's written the way that it is, but as we continue to, to really tighten this, the policies and procedures around naming rights, that we're gonna have more requests in our school district, especially with the construction that's coming offline. We've got a lot of great, and I'm really proud of the work that the board has done to update all of the pricing and those naming rights. It's the question really for discussion and, uh, this is not, uh, a formal vote item tonight. But it's for us to get a better idea if there is going to be any changes to this policy when it comes to those people that want to have a naming right. Um, you know, is this, what limitations might there be from the board?
So can, may I? Um, in reviewing the policy, cause shocking to all, I don't memorize all of our policies. Um, almost there, about three quarters there. Um, the very last paragraph, it's pretty clear. And I will read it so everybody out there in TV land. It's our policy, the second page.
Yeah, let me just distinguish, so, so there's two, if, people following at home, is the board policy is seventy-three-ten.
Yes.
But then there's also a regulation, which is more of the administrative processes behind.
So I, I'm looking at the regulation, excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Breggy, for the clarification. Looking at the regulation. The last paragraph says, "All proposed agreements and arrangements, financial and otherwise, between foundations and prospective donors with respect to the naming of district property shall be fully disclosed to the board in advance and must be expressly approved by the board before execution. No commitment regarding naming shall be made to a donor prior to approval by the board of the naming proposal." We put that in as a safeguard so that we wouldn't have to go either back and forth on little stuff. Because like they did the, the take a seat campaign and people were donating seats, we didn't approve those. Okay, that's for transparency, no, that was a BHGF donation. We did not approve those. We, we, um, those were done outside of the board's, uh, approval process and rightfully so. We don't have to approve every donation or any donation unless we so choose to, right?
Right.
So that begs the question, this is in our policy already. So any issues that come up regarding the naming of a, an event as opposed to a specific person? Because I know this past year that they had a tree dedication for Cheryl Katz at Horseman in her honor and her memory. So anything else like that, um, would, I would say would fall akin to that. We would have no reason to deny that. Um, if we wanted to get the, the approval beforehand, I think the, it behooves the administration and the BHGF to bring it to the board for that approval. Um, I think we put a threshold in also on amounts, that if it's a certain amount, it automatically triggers board approval.
So we, we re-watched, uh, a, a previous meeting that talked about that it would come back to the board and I, and I understand that it's, it's different in our board policy. But that it, if there was a change to the, the way that it's being funded, if there was a, uh, yeah, some sort of creative way for somebody to donate, that that would be brought back to the board. Uh, and I'll just say like the baseball field, I'll just say.
Right.
Um, is that that would bring back, but there was, there was also board direction at that time that once the price was determined, that, that we wouldn't need to bring back every single, um,
So if the price point is met, so like for every auditorium seat for fifteen hundred, it wasn't, there was no, none of them were told no, and I believe you could actually put, it was just a character limit. I think when you typed your message behind a seat. Is that correct? I mean, in other words,
Yeah, there was a character limit for that.
Character limit, and obviously anything that's defamatory, vulgar, anything or illegal, obviously it's not gonna be permitted.
Yeah, the, the, the purpose was, uh, really around the fact that there was, there was no contract in place. So we, when we were asked to, like, what happened with this, you know, with the conheim? And, and how did that naming right take place? Is that we would go back then and have to look through all of our archives to find, and there was, there was no real process in place for the naming rights. And so for the first time that since, since I've been here, I both, and certainly before, is that we didn't have a contract in place until this board put that into motion. And that was really helpful to us, is that, and, and through the help with BHGF. Because, um, we have, for the first time, anybody tracking when we're all gone, somebody's gonna be able to track and it's consistent. That contract is very, very consistent. So that, I just want to go back to, like, the discussion at the last meeting that we had, uh, which I'd have to check my notes, we re-watched it, is that it wasn't to bring back every single naming right if it's using the contract that's been approved by the board.
Right, as far as, um, content of a plaque though, you know, as, as plaques get bigger or people can have more characters on a plaque.
Right.
I think that, um, maybe that's something we'd want to put in, into regulation. Because to trigger a board approval, if it's just going to be a name, whether it's a family name, there's something family in honor of this person, whatever that, I don't think we need to get involved with that. But once it deviates from that, and that could be the, the, the line that, that draws that and makes a policy, then it triggers the approval. Because then we don't want to give carte blanche to people to make donations and call out certain things that we don't align with as a district. Um, so I, I would be, I wouldn't, I would want moving forward that safeguard in. And it, and it doesn't mean that it, it's gonna get rejected. It just means that if, if somebody comes to our campus and sees a plaque and it says something untoward and the board could have stopped that, then, or, you know, we, we put a safeguard in for that. That might be something I would consider putting in for the future into the, into the regulation. I think the policy is fine. I just think the regulation would have to be updated.
No, I mean, basically, I don't want to be repetitive here, but the was approved by this board previously was to have a standardized contract. Cause bluntly speaking, for donors to get it done from beginning to end was taking months and months and months. And it's not a great look for, uh, for the district to say to the donors, don't worry, in eight months, we'll approve this donation. Uh, and the safeguards that are in currently are on pre-approved items that were set by the board of education. And then also that the district has to sign off, typically that's Dr. Breggy signing off on behalf of the district. But we're completely deferential to the board, it's district property. So if you want us to come to the board for approval or anything out of an individual with a standard donation in memory of, we're happy to do so. We are here basically to make sure we get direction from the board as to how you'd like us to proceed.
It's, it's, we understand and we have a good working relationship with the foundation and trust that, that you wouldn't approve something that we wouldn't approve.
Well, in the contract, it looks like, says, sorry to interrupt, that the actual contract says something like, it, this goes in concert with the,
Yes.
Policy. So like anything illegal, anything is not gonna go through the,
I, I understand, I understand. I just, I just, I'm asking my colleagues, I'm not, that's the suggestion that I'm making is, does it serve a purpose to have a safeguard in our regulation? I wouldn't touch your contract, your contract's fine. I'm not even asking to do anything. We, we did all of that work. This is specifically down to potentially verbiage on a plaque, right?
I agree.
That, that we, that we, we may, and I, and I have to also say that I haven't thought this extensively. Cause I didn't know what the discussion specifically was gonna be about. So just in looking at what's in front of me, that may be the only place that the board may want to have approval so that it doesn't fall upon administration to make that decision, because we've had plaque issues and I'm not talking to you dentists.
Plaque trouble.
We've had plaque trouble in the past. You wonder, Dr. Breggy knows what I'm talking about.
Plaque-a-gate twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four.
So I would like to, I would, I'm thinking, is there a way to do this to prevent that, right?
I, I like your suggestion about having it be narrowly tailored. And then we can grow from there on a case-by-case basis or going forward create a new exception.
Right, so, um, my thought is that if it, if it's in honor of somebody, in memory of somebody, in memory of something, whatever, that's fine. But once it goes beyond that, then I would say perhaps this is something that should come in front of the board.
Well, what is something in your mind? Because to me, it was all, I even was surprised to see this, um, I hadn't really combed through it that much. I was surprised to see this and I was kind of confused, like, um, entity, does that mean it, we can make it in, somebody could donate in the name of an entity, not just a person? somebody could donate in the name of an entity, not just a person? Like for example, let's say Starbucks came to us and wanted to donate a building, you know, do a building. Rebecca loves it, but it's not that community.
Yeah, we don't love it.
It's not our green.
Yeah. That's not Beverly Hills and we're not necessarily for sale. We're going for a community and community, community connected vibe. So I actually really want to sit down and like.
Yeah, it wouldn't even get through us, but that's.
But that's, these are the questions.
So Judy, so what I'm, so what I'm saying is some, some, let's say somebody wants to donate something and then on the plaque it's going to say, in memory of this person, they really love drinking Coca-Cola.
Yeah.
You know, that, we can't do that, you know?
Well, it's not consistent with our educational values.
Right.
And, and, and I mean, I, I agree with you. And while we don't like to suppress, you know, freedom of speech, I would agree with that because it's, you know, we want verbiage and things that are consistent with some of the things we care about.
Right, so I'm just saying, it's not, like I said, this is not directed at the current B H E F, the current administration. This is trying to put something in place that lasts a long time so that no, we don't get tripped up in a situation at all. That's, that's the idea of the policy is to prevent us getting snarled up in a trap. So that would be my suggestion. It would, it would just be something that if it goes beyond a certain kind of either dedication or honor, memory of something, I mean of a person, then bring it in front of the board. Just so, like I said, if they say, you know, in, in, in honor of Kmart, you know, we miss you so much.
That's why maybe we should keep it at people and not things.
Right, but, but the question had come, Dr. Braggy had mentioned something about events or things. If people wanted to remember, if people wanted to remember the Holocaust, if people wanted to remember D-Day, if people want to remember, I think those would be okay, you know? You're, those, one, they're historical, we study them, so it fits under our educational umbrella. So I think those things, you know, should be allowed. It's just, you know, there's some stuff that might not be, right?
But once we opened it, you know, it really made me think of when it was asked of us to approve the woman life freedom art work.
Mural, yeah.
Mural, yeah. So I was going back to that conversation in my head as I was thinking of this. And we decided, let's be very limiting so that we don't have to start debating and thinking and so we can focus on our work at hand. So in your mind, things or events or historical events might be something that you or we view as good until they're not, you know? And so I just hesitate to open Pandora's box.
That's why it should come for approval.
Yeah. I think, I think narrow, I agree with you about narrowly tailoring it. And I'm, I don't know how I feel about things. We did Mrs. Katz of a specific person.
Right.
We did a family lost their daughter and we had a bench in her honor. And again, that was a specific person. But I think that once we move beyond that, then it has to come back to the board.
Yeah, it just has to come to, to the board for approval. So there's no, there's no, I mean, a lot of stuff is, we wouldn't even debate it. It would be, oh, okay, thank you for bringing it in front of us, approved. You know, it makes sense, you know, that's, that's, that's fine. I mean, they're, they didn't, Washington DC certainly has their share of dedications and memorials and.
That's true, and, and there's plaques for Armenian genocide in various parts of Glendale. And also we've been talking about trees, which I think is an amazing idea. And the symbolism of trees, not just in the, in the religion of Judaism, but in a lot of religions, it's symbolic in a lot of ways. And I think that that is attractive to donors for a variety of reasons. And, you know, when we, the, the way it differs from the idea of the, when we had the mural discussion, if a donor comes along and they want to give money that goes to, you know, to B H E F and some of the great things that benefit the, you know, a donation, let's say the plaque costs five hundred in manufacturing. So that's twenty-five hundred that goes to students. It goes to student-supported programs. It supports the schools directly. And I'm a big fan of, of B H E F and I, I feel like we're just getting started with what we can do with B H E F. So I think that while we want to welcome donors and we certainly don't want to discourage anyone from adding funds to B H E F and those, those programs, because let's face it, love makes the world go around, but money actually powers a lot of things that can really help students and some of our great teachers and innovations. So I think that we want to make it very appealing to people to continue to donate. People can be very picky about what they choose to donate to. I have been someone who gave, who gives, you know, when I can, like I, I remember your, I think B H E F opened up benches at BV, BVMS. And then there, you know, there was the auditorium seats, which I purchased some of those. And then the tree notion to me is an amazing symbol. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think it's a good idea to have parameters, but we want to be as open in terms of free speech with donors so that we continue.
I don't want to be open with free speech.
When we are doing things that are consistent with our values and that makes sense to our community.
I don't want to debate about our values.
It's, it's, I think that our policy once again answered it, right? It's, these things can come in front of the board for approval. So what really giving direction to Michael is just that the B H E F is aware in their practice to make sure those come in front of the board, right? So if it's anything beyond just a simple name, it should come in front of the board. And by the way, I hope this is a problem. I hope a bunch of these keep coming in front of the board, right? This is the first time we've even discussed this since the policy was redone last summer. So I think, I think we're okay. And it's, and to me, it's not even about free speech. You, you brought up free speech, Dr. Stern. It's not, it's, it's a plaque, you know? There's no, there's no, it's not, it's not, I don't think, I wouldn't bring free speech into the conversation. It's just, it's literally a plaque that memorializes someone, something and about whatever it is. Like I said, if it's beyond a simple name, in honor of, in memory of whatever, then bring it in front of the board so we can make sure we're all on, on par with it.
Anything other than a someone should come to the board.
And the policy's there already, so we don't need to change policy. We're just giving direction because we can do that right now, that there's an understanding between administration and, and the B H E F that bring it in front of the board, that's all, which is.
And, and that's why we're doing this now, because we, there's been so much work that's been done by our board and B H E F and the administration that we believe that, you know, we are going to be seeing a lot more naming rights. So that's why having this conversation with you now is really important. Because again, as construction starts rolling off our campuses and, and new areas are being opened, that B H E F is doing a really great job of pushing and sharing and marketing these opportunities. So I'm sure that there is a lot more that's going to be coming. And each one is a little bit different, so.
Good. And, and to whomever was the catalyst for this conversation out there that was donating, that struck this up, I thank them because they're very giving and we appreciate that.
I appreciate the direction from the board. I got clear direction.
Not, we don't give you direction, we give him direction on record.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yours as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to.
Reports.
Yes, reports, so Michael.
Great, thank you very much. Very short report for you, but I, I want to start off with a quick video clip provided to K-Bev. So if we could roll that, just to start us off. So I want to just kick off the report. This is really what community is all about. And this, this five K walk run for the, the Duncan Book family and in memory of Mason has been growing each year. This is the largest turnout that we've had with over eight hundred people that have signed up for the race. And so we want to thank our community for being part of the race and just being part of the community feel. We had this event at El Rodeo Elementary School, which was the perfect backdrop for all of the vendors and all of the activities that happened before the race. And I want to thank the board for their support. I want to thank Mr. Mead for putting together a security plan in place for this event. And we just want to thank the community for coming out. My first slide in my report as we slide over is just a variety of people that you'll see at this event. And nothing speaks more to community than this type of involvement from the youngest of somebody that's four years old running until, you know, all the way up to somebody that was over ninety years old that's running and being part of this activity. And just want to thank everybody for being involved and being part of it. It's a huge event and it's another great partnership that we have with the city of Beverly Hills to actually have this event and pull it off. So I want to thank everybody for that. Oh, okay. You got it. Thank you. So that showing the video pops me out of Zoom, so hang on one second. Sorry, where I keep the Zoom link is in another file, so hang on one second. And I apologize, hang on one second, I'm trying to find where the link is.
I was just reflecting on the, the race for Not Today Cancer. And one thing that I, I will always remember is the little ones. They held a special, and Stacy and Jen, if you're hearing this, they, I guess they chose to have a little ones run. It was just so cute. Half of them ended up reduced to tears, but it was still really cute because they, they're.
Mine won that one.
No, really, is that right? Okay. At some, I saw these kids, they were so cute and they were going forward. And I thought it was such a great idea because it gave them the opportunity to like own the race too instead of being like overcrowded by a bunch of, you know, elephants. So I thought that was really, it was so cute. And I think it was after the, the, the early one, the first one concluded. I didn't realize, and, and I think this is feedback for the next race, I didn't realize, but I should have, that if you get, if you subscribe and you donate and you get a bib, that you're tracked. And so I came in fifth to last and, and that's a little embarrassing.
What was your time?
I don't even know, probably like five days.
Or did you walk?
No, I didn't run it.
But we walked in together, so that means I was six to last.
So Judy was six to last and, but it's really embarrassing. I had no idea. I think next time I will, I will put the bib somewhere else or I'll put it on the fastest person. And then, you know, that will, my time, I'll put it on you. But then the other thing is it lists your age.
Then don't put it on me.
Okay, but I thought, okay, so I'm not looking too good here, fifty-two-year-old and I came in fifth to last. And, you know, but it, it was great, but yeah, the bib, beware of the bib, it doesn't track you.
Wonderful option, are you ready, Dr. Braggy? I'm sorry, I don't want to.
No, go ahead Noah.
They had this wonderful option for those that couldn't be here to run virtually.
Yes, that was cool.
And I, I couldn't actually attend the actual race.
I was trying to figure out what you were doing on your post, oh, you were saying.
I ran it, I ran it very early in the morning because I had to be somewhere else. So I got up and I ran a five K.
I didn't realize that.
Wasn't my best time, but.
Well, it wasn't fifth to last, I bet.
No, it would have been pretty good. It was around thirty minutes, but it was.
So just a couple of, of pictures here. And, and I also want to extend a big thank you to Mr. Ellis. This is, I got to tell you, this is a lot of work. This, you know, we start talking about details a year in advance. And I know that this was like taking on a full-time job, Mr. Ellis. And just want to thank you because with all of the contacts with, working with Mr. Klutzle in the band and having sound and having, I mean, this is putting on a huge production. It's not just to show up and have a five K. It's there are rehearsals, there is dedicated time to creating this space and this environment and this, this spirit, if you will. And there's a lot of work with the city as well. So I can't tell you enough just how much I appreciate this, Mr. Ellis. Moving on, as we always talk about recognitions and acknowledgements with Rashashana. And so it feels like we just met because we had a, a short holiday break and we are back again before you tonight. So very short report, it's also National Fire Prevention Week. So shout out to our fire department and our other partnerships in the city. Yesterday was a really incredible moment for us in the city to commemorate and to recognize those victims on October seventh of two thousand twenty-three. Remi, our student board member that is not here, had a big part in putting that together and working with our students. Last year at this time, we had a vigil that was produced and put on by our students, which was remarkable. And yesterday was even better. We had a great turnout for an opportunity to commemorate and, and really recognize and talk about and acknowledge how difficult this year has been, especially for our Jewish students. Life has changed considerably for them. And, you know, we're going from a five K and I was talking about community spirit. And that's what we have here, is that same community spirit. And people sharing stories and sharing their thank yous. And then recognizing that we still have, there's a hundred and one hostages that still have not been returned home. And so this was a ceremony in which the students developed and had yellow ribbons for the names of each of the hostages that have not been returned home that are on our yellow ribbons and placed in front of a tree in front of our Hawthorne campus. And it was a beautiful backdrop to a very tragic and horrific event that has changed life as we know it. And we had a great opportunity to hear from our school board and from the city council as well. And so I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for these opportunities like this. Because it's opportunities like this that really pull us together. And for me, as your superintendent, you know, it's, it's going back thinking eight, nine years ago where the community really opened up their arms to a new superintendent coming in and really embraced that, you know, somebody new coming in. And, and what the community has done along, especially with our board, has supported my own growth as a leader, but also learning really important things that I need to know about the Jewish culture in my trip to Israel. And all of this is all connected together because this is a very connected community. But it's really strengthened for me the knowledge and just the profound heritage in Israel and how important that is to our community. And so yesterday was just a full circle moment of nine years of that type of support and be able to see that again was really heartfelt, has certainly left a lasting mark on my heart. So just a shout out again to our clubs at B H H S, the Israel Club, the Jewish Club, also the Jewish Student Union who helped put on the entire event. Also to Ms. Starkins who helped and worked and coordinated with the students and their vision. Yesterday was a really great event. Mrs. Marcus was able to join us at the high school to listen to Charlotte Corchat, who is with Stand With Us. And she really shared a heartfelt message. It's just the importance of and the power of education and fostering understand. It's just the importance of and the power of education and fostering understanding and about how we move forward after October 7th. And she is an integral part of working with school districts with antisemitism. And we look forward to continuing a relationship with her. I'm not sure if that was recorded or not, but that, like, that was a really moving event for students at Beverly Hills High School yesterday. And, and really want to thank each of our principals. We had great turnout, not only yesterday, at yesterday's event, which was put together quite quickly. But also just in our individual schools, because every one of our school campuses had a moment of silence, had some commemoration of October 7th. Every school in our school district. And I'm just so proud of that happening. And our leaders have really stepped up to ensure that, you know, we're doing the same types of things that are reflective of our community and the importance. And that was, you know, without having to direct our leaders, that they're doing the right thing, that they're that in touch with our community. I, I couldn't ask for, for more than that. So thank you. Quick congratulations. As you can see here, a number of students that began with being nationally recognized awarded students to our National Merit Scholarship Program students, then to our semifinalists. The one thing that you should notice from this group of our young high school students is that it's getting larger, that we are recognizing more and more students. And this is something that we see this trend growing. And this is despite a, an enrollment that has been declining. Is that we are recognizing more students and accolades to them and their families for their pursuit in educational excellence for themselves. But incredible representation for the Beverly Hills Unified School District. So we look forward to continuing to show you how many more of our students are being recognized. Our art show is coming up. It's, it's, it's the city's art show. But we have an opportunity to share some of our student work. We've been able to do that in the last couple of years. And that's pretty exciting because this is an international event that happens. And so to have our own student work being in a place, a beautiful arena for international travelers to come view and see is, is quite rewarding for our young people. And there's not a lot of high schools and middle schools in the country and elementary schools that can say that they have their work displayed in such an international venue. College Connection Night is on October 14th. There is a series of speakers that's going to be happening at the high school, as you're probably well aware of. We do encourage people to attend as many of our college nights as possible because information is always changing, education is, is power. And to have as much of the latest information about how to benefit from people that are working with our colleges. This is the, the time to get involved and to show up and see what's being offered for our families. So please come out. And it doesn't, you don't have to be in high school to be able to come and enjoy and begin to learn about what the college process is like. I'm going to end with our community slide, which is an opportunity for our neighbors to learn more about what we're doing in our school district. We're so proud of what we're doing. This is going to be quite a year as each month rolls off with some of our construction. And at our next meeting, Mr. Krot will be giving us an update on where we are with the grand lawn and where we are with our construction. And it's just all good news. It's all very exciting news as this continues to progress. I also want to say he's, he's not here right now, but I wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Aaron Reitman. This has all been about community and spirit, and I kind of want to end with that. That we had a, an employee that takes the bus to work every day, was hit by a car last week. And it just happened to be Dr. Reitman that was driving by. That was the good Samaritan that jumped out and was helping this employee who was on their way to Horseman Elementary. And, and he got in contact with me and wanted to let me know about what was happening and about, and, and shared with me the story that the employee was so worried and concerned because they didn't want to be late and miss work because they actually did go to the hospital. So there's been some good, good things. There's some good news. The prognosis is fine and it's, it, but I just want to let you know that it's, it really does take a village. And when people in our own community that are experts in areas, like in this case with Dr. Reitman being a doctor, you know, for him to jump out of his car, not knowing who that person is, and then to do the follow-through, I just want to give a shout out to him because that's like through and through, you know, what, what we see on a daily basis working with our community. And that is my report. And if I didn't say it before, Remy has a, a water polo match. And so we gave him permission to, and they won.
Yay!
All right.
So good for Remy.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Board member comments about the report?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
No, thank you so much for all that good stuff.
Great.
Thank you so much. I also wanted to mention that not only did a lot of the students from the Jewish student, wait, Jewish Student Union, Jewish Club and Israel Club did a lot for yesterday. Gillian Samadi and Remy both were, were really great and all of them together. And we're really good, happy with the, with the turnout. So. All right. So next we have Personnel Services.
So I was going to ask if this is actually an approval or just an information? Because it did not indicate in the transmit-
Workplace Violence Prevention Plan?
Approval. Then I will make a motion to approve the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sorry.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, motion carries?
Okay, make a motion for the approval of Amendment Number 16 to the PROES contract, removing portions of the high school from the site lease to accommodate Building C.
All second? I'm sorry, was this the one you pulled?
No, she wanted to be-
I wanted to discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a question about if it's possible.
For 13A, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for joining us.
It's my pleasure.
I wanted to draw your attention to the map-
Okay.
In Exhibit A. I definitely understand why there needs to be a discrepancy where, you know, in the front lawn of where the front lawn will be and then where there is kind of a buffer to where Building C is going to go in. So I, I, what I'm understanding is the front lawn ultimately will be wider than what we're seeing once the Building C construction is over, right?
Correct.
Okay, but my question to you is about like mechanical engineering, plumbing, irrigation. How are, what's the plan? How are you guys going to run the pipes and the sprinklers and all that kind of stuff? And have it be consistently worked out? But have one chunk unfinished?
So all the utilities aside from the irrigation will be part of this Building C project. So that's not going to be affected by this new boundary we're creating. But you are correct with the irrigation part for the grand lawn. The irrigation will be stubbed out at that border to accommodate the future planting and irrigation that we'll have in the rest of the grand lawn that won't be completed until Building C is completed.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're correct.
Yeah.
But the other utilities, gas, water, not non-irrigation water and any other utilities are, will be part of the Building C project. It won't be cut off in this grand lawn area.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I'll make a, a motion for the approval for change order number one for CalShape Implementation Services for District Request to Larger Boiler.
All second?
All in favor?
Did you?
Aye.
I mean, I was curious to know how much more water is going to be boiled.
Well-
You're waiting for your tea or something?
It's not necessarily more water will be boiled, but our current boiler that we have now, the size of it, it's just barely large enough to accommodate our pool, the swim gym. So while we're doing this work and having to replace the boiler anyway, we decided to upgrade it a little bit. And also part of this change order, I don't know if you saw, is also to accommodate the relocation of the boiler. Originally, we were going to have it in the swim gym basement, but it's been determined that it'd be better to have it on an outside pad that will be enclosed. And that will help with ventilation. And then this change order includes the redesign of that, the engineering and also the additional ventilation that will come with it.
And then this will be, I assume this will be adequate for, to heat up the additional outside pool?
No, this is just for the swim gym.
This is just for the swim gym, so just for a greater capacity?
Yeah.
And that's going to have its own boiler?
Yes. The, the outs, the exterior pool will have its own boiler room.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then now that we're on the subject, at one point we talked about a pool cover for the, for the outdoor pool. Actually, Mrs. Marcus brought it up. And so I just wanted to-
Yeah, that's part of, amount of, one of many value engineering items we're looking at and would, it would be an add actually. But there are a lot of items that we're working with our least leaseback contractor on and will continue to look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to board-
We got a vote.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion with World Languages Hebrew BBS. I wanted this added onto the agenda. And I know that Ms. Marcus was also interested in circling back to this, this issue. So I'll start. I know that we had a lot of diligent middle schoolers who successfully completed Part One of the, of Hebrew One. And my understanding is because they couldn't finish Part B, they weren't able to, they weren't in a position to then take Hebrew Two at the high school. Well, that's sad to me. I mean, any, any sort of thing that someone starts that they cannot then carry over and that they took in vain, so to speak, I think should be addressed because, you know, we, we certainly want to honor our commitment to the kids who are interested in, in this.
Yeah, it would have been Ashanda.
Ashanda, great word. You can, people can Google it if they want. That's a good word. Cirrus. Mishigash. Okay, you're welcome. So go ahead. Yeah.
Did you have something to add?
Uh, no, I, I asked staff about this item and, and I'm, I'm understanding the reason for the rationale behind this. I do hope that the people that have cried for this show up. You know, there's sometimes a distance between saying we're going to do something and do it, but-
You're saying you hope they haven't lost interest and-
Yes, I hope, the fact that staff went through great lengths to make this possible, which I agree with you, it should have been. And, and it was kind of, it wasn't for reasons not ours. So I'm glad that they found a solution. It looks as if they found a solution.
And I want to hear about that. Go ahead.
So maybe you want to hear from Mr. Doctor Seaman before we go on.
The solution was a little pricey, right?
The, the online thing was, but there's some other remedy, correct?
Yeah, so ultimately, we have identified about ten families in the community that this would apply to initially. We, again, remember this is a teacher shortage issue. This isn't a BHUSD issue. We don't have teaching colleges out there that actually have certificated secondary Hebrew licenses. So we are a lot of times looking for unicorns. Someone that has a teaching credential that then also is credentialed then to teach Hebrew language and culture. And so in our mass search with Dr. Horvath, that was fruitless. We started to explore online options. The families chose not to go that route, even though it was individualized and one-on-one. We were providing things like Language Birds as opportunities. Then we then had to go back to the drawing board. And Dr. Horvath and I may or may not have now found somebody. However, that person is currently under contract with us Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, who will be released on October 15th. In that, because these students have already selected an elective and we also don't run classes with less than fifteen kids, we are creating an opportunity for the families for a eight to nine-thirty late start Wednesday course. We hope to start on October 16th. He'll leave on October 15th. And then the following day, he'll begin here on October 16th to be able to provide that one B course for the students that are moving into the high school to be able to access Hebrew Two. And then I do, I do encourage not just the board, because again, it is administrative right for us within our scheduling. But, you know, it's hard to justify running, I believe, as much as I love that we're offering this opportunity, that we're offering courses with low enrollment when we would have closed other pathways and other courses. And so I just also need to put that out there for us to always consider as we're closing things like aeronautics, you know, aerospace, because they had nine kids running it, you know, and we take that opportunity away, we, we need to think that through too, just always in future.
I think this was particularly unique in that it was a fun, fun, foundational and prerequisite type of class. I can appreciate that there is a teacher shortage and I can appreciate that finding someone who is certified, certificated appropriately, has the right pedagogy and is a good fit, has chemistry with kids. I think those are, it's, it's hard. So I think it's great if you found someone and I'm really hoping for the best. And I trust that you'll reach out to those ten families or so, so they know because, you know, they were sort of at a loss. So that's great. Sounds like we have a workable solution.
I mean, it might even be less than ten that end up showing up as you were saying.
Very possible.
So then what do we do?
Yeah, but, but then I have a question for you. If this individual ends up working out well, does that mean that then we could look into growing the program again? So it's almost like a lost leader, like maybe we're losing a little bit, but then it helps us ramp it back up by investing?
Yep. And, and so ultimately, I, I kind of put it back on to the community on this because initially, we two years ago had a discussion here at the DIAS around a pilot program. And it was called a pilot program. We went out and found an instructor. We launched the program where we were able to secure, we were promised masses and we got sixty students to enroll into the elective at the middle school. From that sixty, only twenty-seven then chose to re-elect to take the course for year two. At the same time, unfortunately, we also did, you know, the instructor ended up not working out for us at that time. And then of that, of those twenty-seven, we are down to, again, having conversations with-
A handful.
Correct. And so I just wanted, I, I, I kind of go back to that whole, I know that we believe in student requests should drive our master schedule. We want to explore students' interests and World Language is a requirement. But I do employ, like, the community that to have masses in the courses, they need to then select that in January to make it a priority for us.
But Dr. Seaman, let me share something with you. Good news travels fast, you know? Sometimes bad news travels really fast. But good news does travel fast. And so with any program, if a handful of the students participate and it's going really well, then the odds are that then we can develop the program and grow the program, you know? I know that you went from sixty, not you, I know that the program went from sixty to twenty-seven and that was disappointing for all of us. But I think that it was a function of that staff member not being the right fit, you know? Because you see that when we have, we have programs where the teachers are really bonding and connecting with the students, that grows and grows. So let's see what happens. But I did have one question for you. Did you guys consider maybe just offering it as an ILC option, something like that? So I'm worried that the students won't take us up on the opportunity of an eight AM start instead of the nine-thirty. And so I just was curious if you had flushed through that.
We did. That's initially what we offered them. So we actually offered them individualized through Language Birds, which was guaranteeing us Hebrew instruction with- which was guaranteeing us Hebrew instruction with a credentialed Hebrew teacher.
But was that not at their cost?
No, we were covering the cost. They wanted an in-person option.
Uh-huh.
And so that put us back on the trail. So if we were to have went with Language Birds, we would have had this implemented as early as August.
Yeah, they'd be on it already.
Correct. And, yep, and, well, no, we were covering the cost.
I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Because I did hear from, and I apologize for that.
Yeah.
I was sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I went and met with Language Birds, I met with other vendors, I flushed out and even got approval kind of through our ed services budget to be able to pay for each of the individuals, each student individually onto the online platform. They would have a one-on-one. Some of them felt that it would be best to learn in person, fine. Then we were back at the drawing board, we were able to secure somebody. Unfortunately, they are under current contract. And so we do hope that bringing that person in and people will come out, that we can build the program. But I do want us to just be conscious that we have in past also cut programs off of our master schedule for other student interests based on low enrollment. And so I just want to be fair across the board.
I hear you, yeah.
When master scheduling, because we are representing all students in the district.
I hear you completely. I mean, to Dr. Stern's point, this is because the hope is that they will be able to get their 1A, 1B, and then land in 2 at the high school.
Yeah.
So for me.
It's a unique situation.
It would be the same if we had offered Greek, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's not because it's. It's Hebrew, it's an obscure topic in many schools and we're very fortunate to have it. So you need to round it out with the commitment we've given them.
And I, I did not understand that you had offered to cover the expense.
Yeah, I wasn't aware either.
And, yeah, and I want to thank you for that, and I'm sorry that I didn't realize.
Um, I just want to add, you said students drive the master schedule. I think we have to be cautious. That should apply when we have existing staffing, right?
Yeah.
We should be very careful, and this goes for any subject, right? Anything, because you brought it up, so it made me think. We have to be very cautious about offering something that we cannot immediately oblige because then we've, this is what we've run into. And we really got stung with this the last three years.
Right, but the, the reverse can happen too. So, because kids will sign up for the right teacher. And so it's, you know, we see it happen all the time. And if you want to grow a program, put an exceptional teacher in that program.
Maybe by the, by November 1, we're going to be high-fiving each other, you know, when this person starts and things work out well. So let's see what happens.
And it's my birthday.
Happy birthday on the October 16th.
No, November 1st.
Thanks for the warning.
Uh, so, but those families and then any other family out there that was in 1A, we just released all of our Gate information, so Gate started today. So thanks, people like K-Bev and Culinary Arts for doing Gate. This is outside of the Gate arena, so that wasn't part of the Gate communication. It's a separate communication going to those that had taken Hebrew 1A. Then they have the opportunity of taking the 1B on late start Wednesdays, 8:00 to 9:30 weekly, starting October 16th.
Thank you, happy birthday.
No, but he'll remind you many times, so don't worry. You don't need to remember.
Okay, with that, there's meeting reports. Anyone want to share?
No, the Human Relations Commission meets on the 18th, so I will attend that. These are our final words?
Yes, sorry, Communication Board.
I want to thank K-Bev, like, as always, thank you students for being here. Thank you staff for the Q and As, for the agenda, I appreciate the responses this week. Congrats to Mr. Waters and Mr. Braun again, that was a wonderful thing to bring to us. And then for all those that are observing the high holidays, please have a healthy fast.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody in our administration and cabinet for all of your hard work the last couple of days from Not Today Cancer and through yesterday's memorial. You guys just continue to show up for the kids and it's, it's very meaningful. So thank you very, very much, and I know a lot of hard work goes into your days. With regard to Not Today Cancer, you know, this little gentleman, we were soccer families together. And to see that his star continues to just shine brighter and brighter as every year passes by.
Does.
Is amazing, and I want to thank the district for taking that from the Duncan Book family and making it a BHUSD event. And it reminds all our families about what is really important. And so it was really magnificent. And to be able to host that at El Rodeo and have our community running in a really safe and amazing way was fantastic. So thank you, thank you, thank you. The only thing that I want to add to that is Mr. Ellis and I attended the Rotary event together yesterday because the UCLA Director of Athletics was there, and thank you for joining me. He arrived a little late, so we didn't get that much of him.
Is it Mr. Ellis late or the speaker?
No, Mr. Ellis was earlier than I was, yeah. Mr. Jarrod was a little late and we actually worried that he wasn't going to make it for a minute. But he made it and he was truly inspiring. And I tried to pull him in for UCLA BHUSD partnership. And so Mr. Ellis witnessed my efforts, and I'm not done. I'll keep trying, so thank you for joining me.
Okay, with that, I have nothing further to add. Have a great rest of the week, and I think we are adjourned. Thank you. October 22nd, Tuesday.